Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the Osage Veneral Council Regular Meeting Wednesday, August 21st to order. Welcome all of you here today. With that, I'd like to ask you to rise. I'd like to have second chair ready to give us an opening prayer. And then you can be seated and then hold any comments. We're going to have a reading of the deceased Osages. Would that please rise? Thank you. We'll be done.
Give us strength today, Father, in the business and the things that we have to deal with today, the responsibilities for our people, Father, for our shareholders, Father. Give us strength to have better lives for them, Father, and the future, Father. Bless all the people that are here in the business, Father, people that are here on business, Father, and all our, all our, all the people that are here for our business and our people, Father. Thank you again for this day and the season that you granted, Father, for coming up on a fall season, Father, our people. So have a good time, Father. Bless all those that are bereaved and soured, Father, those that are unwell or had some few deaths lately, Father. Look to Anthony Daniels and Cynthia Horse Chief, Father, for all solely and unsullied people, Father. Again, thank you for this beautiful day. Give us strength today. In Jesus' name. Amen. Blessed are the deceased Osages in the end of July 2024. Mark Carroll, June 18th, 2024, Chogeo, Oklahoma. Cheryl Taylor, July 6th, 2024, Houston, Texas. Jay W. Oscar Jr., June 30th, 2024, Fort Worth, Indiana. Donovan J. Dean Jr., November 15th, 2024, Thamore, Oklahoma. Stephen A. Malu, October 19th, 2021, Tulsa, Oklahoma. Bryce H. Jake, December 11th, 2023, Wheatbridge, Colorado. Bernard E. Callahan, March 23rd, 2024, Illinois. Fantasy S. Valentine, April 14th, 2024, Dewey, Oklahoma. Dorothy Manzer, July 12th, 2024, Tulsa, Oklahoma. Peter S. Squire, June 30th, 2024, Tulsa, Oklahoma. Victor W. Mashburn, June 22nd, 2024, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. Linda S. Van Lewin, July 22nd, 2024, Duffin, Missouri. Renidette Warren, 2024, Duffin, Missouri. Sonia Hill Billington, March 21st, 2024, Kansas City, Missouri. Anthony Daniel Basoli, Weir, Fairfax, Oklahoma, and Cynthia Horse Chief, Hominy, Oklahoma. May he rest in peace. Five of those are my family.
Just come out and do the service, Brian. I want to say that these are some people that are growing up because they have a lot of faith. With that being said, let's get down to our business. Like a real college.
Councilman Redcorn.
Here.
Councilwoman Chisholm.
Present.
Councilwoman Irwin.
There.
Councilman Redcorn.
Here.
Second Chair Radeagle.
Here.
Councilman Rebar.
Present.
Councilman Chalkburg.
Here.
Chairman Waller.
Present.
Yes, I'd like to go into item number four, the superintendent's report, Superintendent Trump.
I'd like to read into the, into the record the superintendent's report for August 21st, 2024, for oil, gas, water royalties for June 2024 production. We have, for total oil produced, 291,698.36 barrels of oil. And royalties paid was $3,427,894.94. For total gas produced, 136,726 MCFs. And the royalties paid is $28,431.84. The total gas liquids produced was 171,554 gallons. And the royalties paid was $21,465.3 cents. The total tank bottomed oil produced was 168.68 barrels. And the royalties paid was $226.56 cents. The water usage royalty paid was $250. And there was no waste disclosed royalty collected. For rental and bonuses for oil and gas, rentals paid amount of $160. For oil and gas bonuses paid is $3,600. For rental, general rentals paid was $500 for saltwater easement rentals collected. There was $4,800. And for late payment charges, there was $0 covered. For other minerals, APAC produced 33,344.47 tons and paid $42,314.13 in royalties. That's for June. Candy Creek Crusher produced 3,719.559 tons and paid $3,719.59 in royalties for May. And produced 5,453.77 tons and paid $6,104.37 in royalties for June. For Burbank Materials, they produced $11,297.92, or excuse me, $11,297.92 tons and paid $14,235.38 in royalty for May. And produced 9,035.94 tons and paid $10,933.48 in royalties for June. Wilson, Wilson Range produced zero tons and paid $0 in royalties. Rocky Banks also produced zero cubic tons, or cubic yards, excuse me, and paid $0 in royalty. And then Smith Brothers produced 600 cubic yards and paid $450 in royalties for June. For the producing wells, per prior conversation with the OMC, Russ went in and extrapolated some of the categories to expand on them. If the OMC would request, I could have Russ come back in and expand on how he came up with this classification. But the numbers that were included in the report are as follows. For oil, there were 11,937 wells. I guess total, let's get over that for total producing wells, or wells capable of producing at 16,449. For oil, I'll repeat that, it was 11,937. For oil and gas, 114. For water and gas injection, 51. For injection wells, 1,256. For water supply wells, 102. For gas, there was 1,343. TA wells was 494. Saltwater disposal with easement was 130. Saltwater disposal without easement was 937. For injection wells with easement, there's eight. For water supply wells with easement, there's two. For gas wells with easement, there's five. And for CO2 injection, there's 70. For approved permits, there were three workover permits approved, or four plugging permits approved, and then zero for emergency plugging permits, emergency workover permits, and drilling permits. And there were no new drilling completion reports. And that completes that report for August.
Yes, sir. Counselor, question.
Has the Osage Nation have submitted any plugging requests to me?
We have not received any from them. We've, I, we met with them last week, and they said that they anticipate submitting some in the near future, but to date, we have not received any.
I ask a question, Superintendent. Is there any funding other than the grant applications on plugging that's available to this council to have in case of an inadvertent find or? And why I'm asking is DQ was talking about that process. I have directed them to the actual nation on that, but I think this council should be looking into that because it's over, some of the places are going to clean up. And if they find a well, but somehow, if it doesn't go over there, are we available to have that funding available?
With that, for that specific grant, I'm not sure of the terms of it. There may be other grants that are available or funds that are available for that. It's not something I've looked into, so I couldn't comment on it with any knowledge.
I just would like to see if there's something else available for this council.
Understood.
Yes, Councilman Redcorn.
Thank you, Superintendent. You said that you had met with the Osage Nation last week. Can you disclose what the subject to that is?
They wanted to have, they have hired a new petroleum engineer who's going to be the one who produces all the documents. So they wanted us to walk them through what is necessary for the permitting process and to walk them through some of our forms so that when they do submit those, everything's compliant with our requirements.
Okay, well, thank you for that. The, under producing wells, well, I guess it's also active wells. It lists the CO2 injection wells, being the numbers, there's 70. Are all 70 of those in the, in Burbank operated by Capture Point? Or are there some CO2 injection wells outside of that field?
Remind us, any of them within the Burbank field and operated by Capture Point?
Okay. Also too, back at the top, the wastewater disposal royalty, of course, is zero. The only well that generates revenue on our mineral state for that purpose, industrial waste, is the New Chair Wells of Barnfall. We've learned that they will be rebuilding that facility. The well's at least temporarily shut in. I'd like to know, have you heard anything from them as to the disposition of the well and what their plan might be for that well?
The only communication I've heard was through unofficial channels, so I'm not sure of the validity of it, was that they're planning to sell their operation. And if in one that occurs, then we would be in communication with a new purchaser. If in one, do you have plans to do anything with it? Do you expect to be included in that conversation? But to date, I haven't heard anything official either way on that.
Just from the news, I guess?
From the community.
Okay. Well, if, if the, if, if the property doesn't get rebuilt by someone else, is, there may not be a use for that industrial waste well for that facility any longer. Is it, would it be possible for somebody to take that well over? And if they could, could they, of course, they'd probably have to alter the easement agreement they have with Mineral Town. But if we're inclined to negotiate some acceptable terms to us, would it be possible to convert that well from an industrial waste for that facility to a commercial industrial waste waste well for commercial, for commercial use?
I, it, it may be possible. It would be, there would be a lot that would have to go into the process, but it may be possible. From some of the conversations I had with them, I believe they discussed with you all as well, they were looking into drilling a new well for that, for their purpose. They had run into some issues with the existing well. I don't know how feasible it would be to use that for a subsequent project. Again, I don't know. I'm reliant on what was provided to me, so I'm not sure of the viability of it, but it's certainly not beyond the scope of possibilities, whether it's viable or not, I don't know.
Is there a certain time limit they have to use the well or plug it?
It would have to, yeah, I mean, it would have to be either used productively or the lease that they have or the agreement they would have would terminate for non-production within, within a set time. And I'm not sure on the injection side, waste side, what that time limit is or if it's consistent with the oil and gas side.
And so they're making reference back to the easement that we have with them in the renewals.
Correct.
Would dictate that? And you would support and enforce foot-in-the-heel strength?
Exactly.
All right, that's all I had. Thank you.
Councilman Redcorn.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for your report. The first one, I took the money that was paid to our shareholders, divided it by the barrels that were produced, and it comes up to 11,750. So I wanted to say, seems like the vast majority of our production's coming from the Burbank operations there, right?
That's just with my knowledge.
Okay, and what would you guess that Burbank CO2 flood oil is? How much of the lion's share or shareholder benefiting from it?
I don't have a number I'd be able to provide.
But it is quite sizable, wouldn't you agree?
Correct, correct.
I just want to make sure that we understand as an Osage Veneral Council that the lion's share of our headright payments to our shareholders coming from, with our bank's CO2 flood operations. And it makes, yeah, I just want to make sure we, we plan accordingly, we protect what's monetarily coming out of the ground. We don't want to do anything to hurt that operation. That's my, um, thanks, Chair.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for coming, Superintendent. On the approved permits, there's four plugging permits. Do you know if they're all, are two of them?
These should be included in the report.
They've captured, all of the Capture Point, the, the approved workovers.
Yeah, I believe there's three. Yeah, I believe, I believe they won't.
And that goes right back into the council. I believe it's 6,000 barrels approximately. I haven't checked.
Way more than that.
Well, that's the best use of that all. Thank you. How I feel better. Councilors, are there any other questions? Thank you, sir.
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
Has there been any discussion or any, any action taken so far regarding having a lease sale with Councilman, Councilman Redcorn made a motion to have in a resolution?
I sent a letter back requesting some additional information as far as what the, the OMC's plan was for the lease sale, for timing, if there were any leases, or any areas specifically that the OMC wanted included. I think there was a script there's there in the resolution too.
Who did you send that letter to?
It was addressed to the chairman.
Has that been circulated yet? So what are the questions?
I don't have the specific ones. I think the substance of it was that the, the date and time, wanted to know the date and time that the OMC was requesting. And then I believe it asked for, if there are any specific tracks that just wanted to be included in that so we can start that process.
Well, that would be determined by, by nomination made by the interested parties. After you publish the date of the sale, you'd be requesting or inviting nominations for the sale.
I mean, that would be.
So that's, that would happen in that, in that procedure, wouldn't it?
That would be one avenue. Another one would be that the OMC could nominate tracks to, to let members of the public and operators know what's available or what the OMC would want to make available for.
We could just always add those too.
Certainly.
We could nominate, we could nominate tracks ourselves, you wanting to know in advance, scheduling the sale, if we had any in mind.
Correct, correct.
But it's not dependent on us giving you an answer at this time?
No, not, not so much. But if we're going to be.
Going forward with the sale, whether we give you a number, we may say, maybe there is, maybe there isn't. So, and then, so really, is the only describer's, scribner's error that you're waiting on to have corrected?
Just a response. Again, I, with the resolution I have, I think it was just that it was dated incorrectly, although otherwise, I mean, we can proceed with it. It was more so that if we're going to make, if we're going to announce a lease sale, if there's any specific tracks that the OMC wants to have the public bid on, that we can communicate that and we can receive any interest from operators to point them to specific tracks rather than having them do all the legwork.
Did you ever determine, your, your office ever determine what percentage of the producers have, are delinquent, sending in these lease dash reports? And when we're going to get copies of the ones from over a year ago?
If you have all the ones standing from 2023, I can have those circulated to you guys. For the ones that are 2024.
There wouldn't be any for 2024.
Well, the ones that were due this year, that usually get submitted every, I think, year. Those ones, I think, were at about 30% submission, but I have to go back and check the numbers.
But you do have the ones from 2020.
All the ones we received for 2023.
That were due in 2023, for the 2022 period.
Correct, correct.
And so those are, you have those that you can share with us about. Yeah, that'd be, uh, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Counsel. Thank you very much. Thank you, Superintendent. Councilman Redcorn.
Yeah, on that same vein, are we going to have an auction? Did we vote to have it?
We just talked about it.
Can I ask a question, sir? Can I ask a question? I'm unclear, I just want to ask a question. I'm on the mineral council, I have the right to do that.
Yes, sir.
Sir, are we going to have an auction? Because what I heard, we need some feedback from the mineral council.
Yes, sir.
Now, are we going to provide that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, thank you.
We'll fix the scribner error. Send out that email, and then we'll start from there. And it's just like we did in the past, we could nominate tracks that we identified, and that's what we're going to do.
Mr. Rebar, do you want to sell oil? That's my question to you. I'm pushing, trying, we tried very top, a lot of times to sell that continental. You seem like you're against selling oil. That's how we share, get paid our share of it. When I asked about an auction, you get all upset about it. It's about selling oil.
I was the one asking about the auction. You just were bandied.
You mentioned my name?
You know, I don't care a swing.
I'm just saying that, I'm questioning if you're interested in selling oil.
Thank you, Counsel. Thanks. Let, I'll move on down to the next item, which will be our BTFA, Troy's character. I see this is table seven today, Stephanie, please.
Good morning.
Good morning, dear.
I'm here for Troy today, Stephanie Davis.
We're starting right there.
Hey, what's coming up? So, yay. Quarterly annuity payment, BIA will do their sudden pushing on August 30th, and it will be available for those beneficiaries to hold their funds in their account 9:3. So that is after the holiday. So, yes, it's going to go in Friday at midnight. BIA will push the button that day. It'll go in Friday at midnight, so we won't see that payment until 9:3, when we open for business that Tuesday.
You might give that date again.
9:3, yes. 9:3 is when it's going to be there. Scheduled disbursements for automatic payouts and people who are scheduled for dispersment on voluntary hold, those will be released on the 4th and the 5th. So they're not going to hit your banks until the 4th and the 5th, depending on how your accounts are set up. But you can, if you voluntarily hold your funds in the account, you can call 8:00 AM on 9:3.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
And our payment is 4,660, is that correct? And we need to announce that. Is there anything else you'd like to add, other than we really appreciate the work you do?
No, that's it, unless you guys have questions.
Questions, Counsel? We're in, have a great evening. Thank you. Let's move on down to our agenda. Item under the Treasury Board, Treasurer Batson. As his representative, also here today, thank you. Ms. Brown, you just take over.
Okay.
I saw it, I said, no, that's all. We're all from home, that's how we work.
Okay.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
The 731 ending balances for total assets was $798,383. The liabilities were $25,512. The fund equity as of 731 was $772,871. This was a decrease of $79,002. We did not have any revenues for last July. What we did from the year-to-date were at $1 million. Total expenditures for the month was $79,002. Year-to-date expenditures, $638,016. Like I said, the revenue decreased by $79,002. And revenue over expenditures to date is $361,984. That is your ending balance right now.
Yes, ma'am. Counsel, do we have any questions? Or none?
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
So, on the balance sheet, you list under liability. Due, under liability, due to other special revenue funds, $9,001.88. And due to payroll, $16,449. That totals $25,512 of liabilities. What does that mean? What?
That means how the payroll is deducted and stuff, it's reimbursable. So we'll pay, the nation covers it now, but then the minerals council will be deducted for that payroll.
So it's prepaid, serviced?
Exactly. Thank you.
Okay, that, thank you for that. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Have a good day.
Thank you.
I'd like to go into the new business statement. I, second chair, Radeagle, well logged library.
Thank you, Chairman. As you all know, the third mineral council purchased well logged from the Walton Schroeder. Some of you all around the council there. Well logged from the Walton Schroeder, Michael Walton, manufacturer today, back in 2016 or '17, I think it was. And they stored it in a holding in a container down there, and there was no air conditioning or anything like that, you can say. And talking to Bill then, he said, we'd like to move him up here, transport him here. We bought a container, put it right out here on, on Powell Street. And very much like to put out bids for, to get it transported up here. And Bill also recommended that we paint the container. I think the door, we went out and checked the door, how to get into the, into the container. It's very, very hard to get into. You got a really sturdy, you get to get it open. So maybe that, that can be added on maintenance of it to get it to, to work. And anybody that's going to, and, and access it. I'd like to put out, make a motion and we put out bids for the transport and maintenance of the container out here and transport the well log to up here. And the maintenance of the containers. That's my, that's my motion.
Yes, Counsel.
I'll circuit that.
Yes, I have a motion on the floor by second chair, Radeagle, seconded by Councilman Redcorn. We are talking about maintenance on the well log library. Actually, it's a, the container which we have.
Has the container already been set up to accept the well logs and stuff?
Part of it has, yeah, it's right out here.
Okay. Would you make it where people can go in and use it?
We'll probably have some of the staff retrieve it and bring it in office.
Okay.
And then I'll let it leave.
All right.
I'd like to add too, these are real, very vital, historical, they go all the way back to the 1960s. Probably even further than that. Very important, tradition especially.
Yes, sir.
Is that, it's built, it's air-conditioned and fully lighted?
Fully lighted and air-conditioned too. I think they're going to add some, some, some air conditioning too, I think.
But their records are not? But their records are not there, is what I'm.
They're not there. They're out there in Hominy.
In a bad container.
Yeah, real bad container.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. So several months ago, not a year ago, we have a resolution to purchase a trade-on-habit retrofitted for the use of, of storing these records that we got from the Walton Schroeder facility. And this much time, we haven't put the records in it? I mean, I guess, I guess Councilwoman Irwin just got it, or Councilman Redcorn, I think, just asked us. So we've got the, we finally got it here. We've got it retrofitted. You know, we, I remember approving the funds to do that. And that already needs repair and we haven't even used it yet, and it already needs work. I'm kind of concerned about why that is. And why, why, why didn't, why didn't we bring the records up, put the records in, in the facility that we bought for the records?
I remember directly, we, we ordered, it took a long time to get the container here, the new container. Brought it up here and we didn't, we didn't bring the records up with it.
You know, the records, the ones still over by, uh, the industrial, the industrial facility.
I have, I have an answer to that, Council.
Thank you, Chairman. The answer is, uh, previous council had it installed in Hominy. And the records were available and in there. It was just having to, have to drive to Hominy, get the keys from whomever, and go in and look at the records. So the request was made to bring it. And the selection of that facility that they were put in was substantial, and it leaked. So the new request is get a better building, air-conditioned, and put it right out here so you can walk from our office and go in and pull records. So the difference is, they were down there just inconvenient and musty and not air-conditioned. Now they're got an air-conditioned system and water-tight.
Well, that's what I knew, Chairman. I was very much aware of that. I just didn't know that after going to all that expense, that we still don't have a functioning facility that needs repair after we just had it re-modified. And we never did bring the records and put the record in. I just, just kind of dumbfounded and just to learn that. I thought they were there, uh, and, and I'm learning today they're not. And I would like to see them, but they're not being supported.
As fast.
Thank you.
Just real quick, you know, that's that metal container out here, it's like a semi, it's like.
Twenty-five.
Yeah. Next door where the PRC is at, I believe, once the new plant gets built and they get moved in there, PRC may, may be moving down there, which will possibly open up this annex next to the south of this room here.
Oh, really?
So maybe we can go ahead and not put a whole lot of money into this metal container out here with the anticipation of trying to maybe move in there. Plus, there's enough room in there, I believe, that we could probably store all the other well records that we've been owning for a decade.
I believe we can coordinate that transition into digital there and make that a facility. And that we might as well go on record and going. The deal we made with the Pliny was if they didn't move out, that we take back over to our offices. Council.
One of, and this is just for FYI, one of the reasons to put it in the storage bin was of the mold issue.
Line of control.
So there was some mold situation with old damp records. And I think of it as, first of all, they were in our office. And then they had a mold person come in and found that there was mold. So that's why they decided to put them in a box and stick them in Hominy. So this is kind of the third one there.
Yes, sir.
Hopefully, the fourth move will be the box.
Thank you, Council. Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none, uh, we have that motion on the floor? Yes, sir. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Councilwoman Tisha Waller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Irwin?
Yes.
Councilman Redcorn?
Yes.
Second Chair Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Councilman Chappert?
Yes.
Chairman Waller?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Council.
We also would like to go into item seven B, Gopher Oil. We have some terminated leases. Mr. Walkman, would you like to speak for us about this? It's good to see you, Michael. Please join us.
Good morning. Good morning, sir. Thanks for allowing me to be here. This particular lease, uh, is one of the leases that, this particular lease is owned by the OMC. And not only all the other leases that we kind of own together. Right there on the left, they do have a stock. And so when the fire came through last year, this particular lease, it was very low production and probably got a half or three quarters over there. It hasn't been disposed on that. But we did all the other seven leases and spent home. Since the outlaw, Rita Cable, lost all the electric lines. As you know, that, at the rock quarry, unless you have a rock saw, you're not going to bury anything. And that'd be my, very, very expensive. But anyway, so we lost the lead line, disposal lines, and electric lines to all those leases. And every year, Mr. Drummond is helping get those on burner rods. And so we'll go out there and, and weedie and stuff like that and be there at our location with the trailers and protect, you know? This pirate's guard, Northern Winona, got away from everything. I guess it almost got to Kansas Rock. But anyway, Gopher has spent a lot of money, and we'd like to put it back on. But we don't want to spend a lot of money on it, you know, just to get it back. So, but we'd like to put it back in production. It'd be a shame to lose the producer and we get disposed of.
Yes, sir. It adds a disposal on. We are talking one lease right here.
One lease, one order section, has one well and one disposal.
Yes, sir.
And it does have, uh, Mr. David Dryerley, who's a very good ran worker, my company all the time. He, uh, he spotted a location for them on that. He, he recommended to be drilled, which maybe someday we can get it done, so.
What's a particular, uh, legal description on it, Mikey?
Uh, that is the northeast of fifteen twenty-five eight.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, so you're going to need from the council, like to offer us the minimum on this?
Well, I guess that's what I've got to do.
That's what you got.
I can get away without it.
We're, we're family, I mean.
There is, I mean, all of you know, the expenses are, you know, having to get everything done because, right? We've got to lay in, it's lead line, lots of disposal line, electric line. And, uh, so anyway, it's going to be a very expensive project, but, uh.
Council, so.
Combination oil and gas, oil and gas.
Sorry, break.
Oil and gas.
And that would be under a minimum and primary term of three years for the lease at twenty percent route.
I make a motion, we accept this offer, fifteen twenty-five eight.
Yes, sir.
Combination oil and gas for the minimum for three years.
Twenty percent.
Yes, sir.
What's the matter? Now it's going to be on?
Oil and gas is thirty-seven hundred. I usually try to charge efforts fifty bucks, but that didn't work out.
Yes. I need to, I mean, I need to find out if it is a freight oil and gas or.
We will accept the other if you decide to apply for the oil only, then it'll drop.
I second.
Second, I have an idea.
Let's sell some oil.
Any other questions, Council?
So, yeah, thank you. Yeah, I'm like, it, you said that you're going to have to replace the electric line because you, the original electric line was Rita Cable, which isn't allowed anymore. And your flow line, I guess, got burned up. So, so you're going to be able to go ahead and replace those, it's just going to be expensive having to go through the rock quarry.
And it, I mean, yeah.
So you will be replacing it, otherwise you wouldn't be able to produce lead.
Disposal.
All right, well, I just want to say, uh, because I'm so much in favor of producing oil on our mineral state, I'll be, I'll be in favor.
We're going to find out real quick, so. Any other questions from the Council?
I will, uh, I will contact.
Then on one day, man.
Go and see if they'll let it go. If they don't, go, go ahead with it and.
Two years.
Let you know when.
Yes, sir.
That's all I know I can do. I just, I was hoping that I, I didn't know it was going to be twenty-seven hundred, I thought it could be less than that.
Probably on an oil, it would have been, but I have to go with what I'm going to make everyone else do. And it's real easy for me to remain. Thank you. I'm going to call for the question.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael. Stand with me.
Councilman Tisha Waller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Irwin?
Yes.
Councilman Redcorn?
Yes.
Second Chair Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Councilman Chappert?
Yes.
Chairman Waller?
Yes.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes, so we're in good shape there. We need to go into Executive by eleven, let's take a short break. I'd like to call for the motion to go into Executive, please. So moved, executed. I have a motion informed, Councilman Redcorn, executed by Second Chair Red Eagle, call for the question.
Councilwoman.
Oh, who was it?
Tisha.
Tisha.
Councilman Tisha Waller.
I'd like to stay and keep.
Who's seconded? Irwin, yes.
That's fine with me, whatever you are.
Councilman Redcorn?
That's the question I'm, I couldn't.
What do you say, position?
Oh, yes.
Second Chair Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Councilman Chappert?
Yes, sir.
Chairman Waller?
Yes.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Councilman Tisha Waller?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We are in executive. Thank you, Council. Ten, we're going to go.